Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you please stand to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
The United Way Kickoff Campaign with Tim Donovan, UAW Local 2000, and Jerry Scully.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity. You know, each year, United Way in Lorraine County has an annual campaign that supports 62 human service organizations in the community. That kickoff is going to be September 12th, and we'd like the Commissioners to know how deeply indebted we are to the community for the support received in the past years. You know, we see almost 100,000 people through our programs, and we would look again to the Commissioners to formally endorse this program and support it, that this is important to the community, that gets the job done for many people who are at risk, children, families, and seniors. It gives an opportunity, and especially in these difficult economic times, we're looking for a good campaign. And we realize that at times like this, it's even tougher for people to support charities, but it's a time when people need it the most. So, thank you for your support. In the past, today, I've brought with us one of our co-chairs of the campaign this year, Tim Donovan, President of 1104, who I know wants to speak about the matter.
2000.
2000. (laughing). Good morning, and I really can't add much more than Jerry, but not only do we want your endorsement and support, we'd like you to promote that throughout the county employees. With all the cuts, and nobody has to tell anybody, especially tell you, about all the cuts that are ahead, things appear to be getting worse instead of better, and there'll be more people knocking on the doors of United Way agencies. So, with all of us left standing and working, we need to help support the people that need support, so we'd really like you to promote that with the county employees as well. And again, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Do we want a motion of some kind?
Do they have paperwork to give to the payroll department?
Tim and Jerry, do you guys have any paperwork you'd like us to? Would you like us anything for the employees, or?
We can get that.
Okay, if you could get us the information, we'll see what we can do about getting it out to the 2,200 employees here.
We have information for each department, and the history of giving them all of that.
Okay, good.
All of the orders on payroll department, that's table stuff.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
9:40.
Do you want to just do it now?
Yeah.
Dolores Ack is here regarding the Child Support Awareness Month for August 2003, proclaiming it.
Yes, Dolores, would you come up to the podium? We also have a proclamation for you, Dolores. I'll just read a part of it. "In the matter of proclaiming August 2003 as Child Support Awareness Month throughout Lorraine County, whereas the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners wholeheartedly agrees that child support is an essential element in providing family stability, helping children grow safe and healthy, and providing children with opportunity for a better life." And it goes on, but that's the main part of it.
We have four.
I would just like to say a few words. The Child Support Enforcement Agency has the responsibility to provide services to individuals in almost 30,000 child support cases in Lorraine County. We work with potentially 60,000 individuals involved in those cases. I would like to recognize the staff of the CSEA for doing the best job that they can to service those cases, and we do hope to continue to improve our customer service in the coming year.
Thank you, Dolores. Thank you.
At 10:30, Lorraine County Screening and Diversion Program presented by County Prosecutor Manning and 11 o'clock, common pleas court judges. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Advances, repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye with the abstention of 1207-03.
What was that?
I'll have to leave the room if you want to talk about it. I have to abstain due to a conflict of interest, so.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I don't believe there was anything on personnel.
No.
Under 10, under Commissioners, approve change order number two to Gene Resar, Inc., in the amount of $330 for work performed at the Murray Ridge Activity Center Kitchen Renovation Project. Said change orders and the original floor tile and base color selected by MRDD did not match the surrounding surface as originally anticipated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, 11, support the annual comprehensive economic development strategy update for 2002, 2003. This document represents a fair and current ranking of projects worthy of consideration of funding from the Economic Development Administration to the United States Department of Commerce. The priority ranking for 2003, 2004 says as economic adjustment projects are Section 302A Planning Grant for the City of Valeria, Section 209 Revolving Loan Fund Grant for the City of Lorraine, Extension of EDA Section 302A Planning Grant, City of Valeria, Local Technical Assistance Grant, Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, Section 209 Revolving Loan Fund Grant for the City of Oberlin, and under the Public Works Projects, the Infrastructure Improvements, Roadways, Water and Sewer Extensions to the City of Valeria Industrial Park, and the Colorado Industrial Park Expansion in the City of Lorraine.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ron, can you clarify this funding? It says over here, worthy of consideration, funding from Economic Development Department to the state.
It's the Economic Development Administration. It's the EDA.
Yeah, that's Bob Hickey in Columbus is what it is, so is that in the resolution you're looking at, Commissioner?
Well, it's on the agenda. It says over here, this document represents a fair and accurate ranking of projects worthy of consideration of funding from the Economic Development Administration to the United States Department of Commerce. It sounds like it's coming from our department going to the state.
No, the Economic Development Administration is a branch of the US government. We're obligated to report a CEDS, or CEDS, Community Economic Development Strategy, to them in order to make ourselves available should any part of Lorraine County become distressed, and that's through Bob Hickey's office in Columbus. And so, while there may be some confusion, the Economic Development Administration is not our Economic Development Department here at the county. That's a division of the federal government.
Okay, so it's going from the federal government to the state?
It's coming from us to the Economic Development Administration in Columbus, which is a part of the federal government, and then they will forward it to the Washington DC office.
Okay. Thanks, Ron.
Any further discussion?
No.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Number 12, authorize the closeout and payback funds to Lorraine County General Fund Advances in reimbursing the county for salary and utility reimbursement through the Community Development Block Grant, Formula Grants, FY 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award various contracts for emergency home repair assistance to be paid from FY02 CDBG Formula Activities Account 12602-2501-450422. Kaminsky Roofing, Alariah, Ohio, in the amount of $8,000 for roof repair for Kenneth and Katherine Sims, 5112 Farr Avenue, Sheffield Township, and Birch Building Company, Lorraine, Ohio, in the amount of $4,425.56 for roof repair for Juanita Cooper, 38175 Chestnut Ridge Road, Eden Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an intern to purchase a service contract between the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Office on Aging for fiscal year 2004 for the Kinship Navigator Program in the amount of $53,415 effective retroactive to July 1st, 2003 through June 30, 2004.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an entrance of fiscal agreement between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District 16, approve the filing of the 2004 Recycle Ohio Grant in the amount of $198,100 with a required match of $46,355 to be paid from the 202 Account Recycle Grants for a total grant in the amount of $244,455, and the City of Valeria will be getting $56,600, Lorraine, $56,600, and the district will get $84,900 for a total of $198,100, and this grant is due to ODNR by August 31st, and the items listed to be purchased will be noted in the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, 17, approve an enter into subdividers agreement between the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Rob Reynolds of Reynolds Ventures, Inc., for Highland Country Estates Subdivision Crafton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Revise the permanent county maintenance on Brownhelm Creek, Claus Road Ditch, Brownhelm Township, and establish assessments for the 2003 tax duplicate collectible for calendar year 2004. Mr. Faith at 8257 Claus Road has been reviewed and is recommended as follows. For parcel 0100053000027 will be reduced from $15 to $0, and parcel 0100053000040 will be reduced from $6.38 to $2.97 based upon the review of the Engineer's Office and Soil and Water Conservation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the Middle Ridge Road Resurfacing Project. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on August 18th and 25th, and September 1st, 2003. Bids will be opened on Tuesday, September 9, 2003 at 2:00 PM in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Under the Sanitary Engineer, number 20, authorize Lorraine County Auditor to levy special assessments for water line maintenance against all property within various county sewer districts effective for the tax duplicate year 2003, collectible in the year 2004.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Certified Delinquent Sanitary Sewer Council, Lorraine County Auditor for collection on the tax duplicate for the year 2003, collection in the year 2004.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number 22, declaring it necessary to construct sanitary sewers in impertenses in Callan Drive and East River Road in Lorraine County General Sewer District 111. Assessments for the facilities will be levied against all benefited properties fronting upon Callan Drive from East River Road to Spros Prospect Street, and to all benefited properties running upon East River Road from Callan Drive to Fuller Road, excluding five parcels of land along East River Road with parcel numbers 1... 00000414001, 100004130028, and then 25 is the last, 23, and 22, and excluding lot 12 on Callan Drive with parcel 100004134002. All facilities are to be constructed within road right-of-way. This hearing will take place on Tuesday, September 16, 2003 at 5:30 PM in the Grand Room of the Spitzer Conference Center, Lorraine County Community College, 1005 Abbey Road North, Alariah, Ohio. Notice will be published in the General Circulation Newspaper on August 20th and 27th, and the letters will be sent to various property owners.
Was there some question about where the hearing was? Was Jerry looking?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, was there some question about where the hearing was going to be held?
The...
No.
May I?
Yes.
Ms. Dennis wasn't able to be with us this morning, but I did have some dialogue with him concerning this issue. We have been informed by bond counsel that it's optional whether the Commissioners attend these public hearings or not. Mr. Ennis, though, highly encourages the Commissioners to attend the meetings. The turnout that's anticipated from some of these projects because they're somewhat large, volume of people that we'll have coming in, we couldn't hold them in this room, and then the parking issue during the day in downtown could also be problematic. I discussed the issue with Mr. Conny, and I believe he's available here today. Well, maybe he's not.
He's behind the podium.
And so is the attorney, Liano, from Rory Saders.
Okay, so it was the thought that we needed to go off-site and then potentially to give better access to do them in the evening, so we tried to arrive at a schedule. We didn't know at that time whether the Commissioners were going to attend or not attend. That's your option, and if the schedule isn't fit, obviously, we can do something with the schedule, but in order to move these issues forward, and we have five of them that you're going to be reading through, we felt if we didn't try to get them on the agenda, and then we can discuss them further with the Board.
I can hit two of the nights, but I can't hit the 16th, so I have something going on if that's going to be a concern with the other two.
I don't have my calendar, so I really don't know.
Okay. Wife's turning 39 one more time, and I don't want to get divorced, so.
You'll find your car do that many times in your lifetime.
Yeah, she's... I keep moving up, she keeps going back, so.
That's good.
These are... This is the beginning of many projects that you're going to be seeing. As you know, we have quite a few projects that are in engineering coming forward that the Board has authorized engineering costs for, so we have five or six more that'll be trailing in this fall similar to these. So we're starting to really see an uptempo in the progress on a lot of these projects that you've been funding over the last year or so.
Okay. I'll be at the... I should be able to make it the other two, just not that night, so.
But did I not understand that we do not have to be in attendance for the hearing to proceed?
Mr. Tigali, would you come to the podium and speak to that issue for us?
My name is Barbara Vertigliano, and I'm with Rory Saders, and we are acting as bond counsel and advising Mr. Cordes regarding the public hearing, and the public hearings are statutorily required to be held, and the date and time is to be fixed by the Board. The implication, obviously, is that the Board is there, at least in a passive role, to receive information. The conducting of the informational portion does not have to be presented by any of the Commissioners, but certainly, it would be much in keeping with the spirit for as many as possible of the Commissioners to attend. Obviously, it's an opportunity to interact with the constituents that are going to be directly affected by the project and be especially assessed for them. However, having all three Commissioners at a meeting is not necessary, and in fact, I've seen, at least in one instance, a single Commissioner was present, at least in a passive role, in your past proceedings. So that is the genesis for the attempt to identify sites, times, places, that will accommodate the group of people anticipated and in an efficient manner so that can be done, hopefully, within two or three days. At least that's as I read Chapter 6117, which is what we're proceeding under.
Okay, it's just that this is a little different than what we're used to doing.
And to the extent that it is different, and to the extent that you are uncomfortable, certainly, the statutory language is what we need to go by and accommodate your custom and practice in this particular county.
Commissioner, we can do this any way you'd like, but it's been indicated to me on at least two or three of these projects, we should expect, you know, 150 people or so, maybe 200 potentially to come to the hearing, and I don't think we can accommodate the parking during the day. That's number one, and 200 in this room would get pretty close. So we probably... While I can't tell you for sure that that many people are going to show up, I think we probably should have a reasonable amount of space and a reasonable amount of parking for them so that we can accommodate their needs.
I don't have a problem with the evening meetings. I'm just...
Well, I don't have a...
I think one of us should be at least...
Well, like, okay, for example...
Unless you want to change the dates, we could all three go to... I mean, I just can't make it on one night, that's all.
Well, for example, this particular one, there's only five parcels here, five or six.
Some of them are small. Mr. Conny kind of set the schedule so that we didn't have a lot of back-to-back. Ken, would you speak to that, please?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Ken.
Item number... Good morning. Item number 22 on the Callahan and East River Road project that affects 78 properties. We expect two per property.
How many, seven to eight, or seven to eight?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Oh, they're just not all listed on here. These are the exceptions that are listed here.
Just the exceptions. Those five lots are not included. They're north of Callahan. So we expect a large number of...
Okay.
Each property owner would be a minimum of 150. It's possible they'll bring more.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Oh, by the way, Mr. Karassee will be at all meetings, representing the Health Department.
The Health Department's going to be out front. Some of these issues were for the Health Department Declaration of Safety and Hazard, so they'll be there, and I understand they have quite a slideshow and a presentation, is that correct, that they'll be putting on at each one?
Yes, sir.
Well, who's going to be in charge of each meeting every night, then? To stop any pandemonium that may arise.
Oh, I'd better ask the question, who's going to be in charge to conduct the meeting?
Correct.
There's not going to be a pandemonium.
Ah, never.
Do we have...
Is that...
Well, we've set the dates. We have all this...
So we're in charge.
Did anybody think about that?
As long as we're in charge, then we better... All three of us better make sure one of us is going to be there to lead the meeting.
We can do it anyway. The Commissioners can lead the meeting, the Sanitary Engineer can lead the meeting. If you so desire, I'll lead the meeting for you. There's really no set in stone structure, so whatever the desire of the Board is, is completely...
I think we have the... I think it's to be consistent, we should lead each meeting every night. I just want to make sure there's a Commissioner there, so. If we're going to vote on this night, we're voting on the first one, and I can't make it to that one, so. That's what I'm saying. Do we change the night?
Well, I haven't even checked my schedule for any of these, but it seems to me that we're putting into motion a process, and it would be desirous that we would be there, but if we can't, the process can still continue. Am I...
Yeah, as long as there's one Commissioner there. I just want to make sure there's going to be...
That's correct. Why don't we take a short break at the conclusion of the meeting, check the schedules, and then we can come back and vote on these issues?
We're all five of us.
Well, it's up to the pleasure of the Board. It's only suggestion how to handle it.
The only thing that has to be...
Yeah, why don't we wait on 20? So why don't we do this? Let's put 22, 23, 4, 5, and 6 on hold, and tell the Commissioners to check their schedules. How's that?
Sounds good.
And then, I don't think there's anybody here that's going to discuss anything else on these issues, is there? Show of hands, anybody here that we really wanted to talk about sewers? I think we already got everything we wanted from the council and Sanitary Engineer, correct?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, so I guess we can wait till we check our schedules, and then when we come back.
Looks like they're every day here.
Is it your intention to put all five of these on hold in order to schedule?
Just to make sure...
Or would you be approving those contingent on your schedule?
No, we're going to come back and vote on them when we...
Today?
Yeah, when we take a break, that's all.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure the dates are okay. See how quick we can get this going. Now we're in...
We have an outstanding motion and a second, 22.
I'll draw my second.
You're just told voting, or you're going to...
I'll draw my second.
Okay, well, I guess my first doesn't do anything without a second.
So we're not... Where to you, Mr. Cordes, Administrator?
Commissioners, I have one quick issue on a litigation issue that I need a very, very brief executive session that we were able to conclude just late this week that I need to brief you on. It shouldn't take very long. And after... Excuse me?
The pendulum.
Yes. Okay. And that's the only issue I have for this morning. We have a long agenda, so I won't delay. No further comment.
Mr. Manning? Can I, Prosecutor? Commissioners' report? Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for your information, item number H3 under Board Correspondence is announcement of a regional cooperation summit being held tomorrow in Lakeland Community College, excuse Community Cos, College, excuse me, for governmental agencies to cooperate in areas including but not limited to joint purchasing, regional advocacy at state and federal levels, workforce, economic, and community development, land use planning. Earlier, you questioned Mr. Twining about that EDA. And as it happens, Mr. Hickey, that you and I have both met with on various occasions from the EDA, is going to be one of the presenters at this summit tomorrow. So it's part of an ongoing series that we've been involved with from the five county area. And Lorain County will host a summit on October the seventeenth to continue this discussion. Thank you, ma'am, chair.
Commissioner Moore?
I have none.
The only thing I have is Craig Snodgrass from the Auditor's Office is here and would like to report on the year-end two thousand and two, oh, Mr. Stewart is here, the auditor.
Mark wants to do it.
Yeah, so, Mr. Stewart, would you like to report on the CAFR, please?
Shirley, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Good morning, commissioners. This is a courtesy presentation made by the County Auditor's Office on behalf of the county itself. This is our two thousand and two CAFR, which stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It was just printed this last Monday, and I think the commissioners have a, a copy of this. This is our eighth year in which we're doing this comprehensive report. It is the number-one financial document that the county places out for general public use. It is a very good, open, and transparent view of the county's finances and operations. As anything like this, this is a comprehensive and a cooperative effort. And I want to say that we appreciate all of the departments that took, took part in this. This is just not an auditor function. So this is hundreds of man-hours and eight months of work. And I want to give special thanks to the Board of County Commissioners and their staff, to Mr. Cordez, the county administrator, John Roca C. I don't see John here today. But his faithful assistant Shelley is here. And you've done a wonderful job working on this team. Mr. Ken Carney is here, thank you very much. And his assistant, John Hamilton, did a great job on the infrastructure component that was a major, major part of this year's return. To our appointed state auditors, which is Gary Finkin Associates, who was part of the process, Mr. Scott, Scott Varney and his staff. Our CAFR partners that we work with diligently is Frank Seringer and Cheney, Mr. Steve Luca, as well as Jim Zarni. They put in many, many hours on this, this effort. To our county treasurer, Dan Tulark, and his efforts. And finally, I just want to have Craig Snodgrass, the lead component person, he's our CPA and our manager of this CAFR. I thought that he could come up and introduce the parts of the staff that did the yeoman's part of the work on behalf of the county. So Craig, if you'd come up here and just give a quick, brief...
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning, Craig.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, I would like to certainly echo Mark's thank yous. Spent many days at Mr. Carney's office, working on the infrastructure, which, with the roads, bridges, so forth. This is a very long, tedious process. We really began about in August of this past year. This year was really, in particular, a little more difficult as we had to implement a new governmental accounting standard, Statement Number Thirty-four. This was really the greatest change, biggest change ever to governmental reporting. And I really do think this is a collaborative effort, this book, and hopefully everybody will read it and see it. But, and actually, you know, and I do want to stress some of the importance of this financial report. For all our pass-through grants, we are required to send, like to Department of Mental Health, the Job and Family Services, so forth, we are required to file this report with them. Anytime we issue debt, we have to provide this statement. We have insurance companies, Allstate Insurance Company, as they have special assessment bonds, they review this report. We must do it. And, and this falls into the hands of a lot of different people who are really taking a close look at the county financials. And again, this could not be possible without the efforts of Mr. Carney's office, the Budget Department, who did a great deal of work this year, Lily Brand, who, one of our chief assistants here, working with the financial report, Lisa Hobart, Jessica Yarish from our booking section, as well as the Settlement Department. There, there are a lot of different hands that go into this and we have to bring it all together. And again, I would like to thank everybody in all the different departments for their assistance. And by the way, also, something we've done for the last five or six years, this, this report's about two hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty pages long. We also try to produce about a sixteen-page document that's a little more user-friendly. I think more people like to read this and I will be a...
It's the condensed version.
Yes, it's the condensed version. And hopefully, I will be receiving these today from our printer and we'll be getting those out to as many people as we possibly can, so.
Craig, how does, how does a person get either the CAFR or the condensed version?
Okay, we do try to take it out to different locations. In fact, the county fair's coming up next week and we will try to be passing out as many of these as possible. We do try to put things out on the internet as well.
Do you have it in a PDF?
Uh, yes, we do.
So we're going to have a post on a PDF on the, on the internet site?
Uh, we're going to try to get, do something to that effect.
That'd be great.
And I know we've had past financial reports out there, again, usually the scaled-down version, you know, it's just a smaller...
Yeah, if we can help, we would certainly like to. And I want to thank you guys, because we already sent your report off to Moody's and Fitch's. It's the essential element they use while they're tracking the county. They wrote us a letter when they were looking for information, so we can't keep up our bond writing without that work you guys do down there.
This is going to be a very, actually, a much-in-demand document this year as other governments are now going to have to start implementing this GASB thirty-four. In fact, I've talked to a number of city auditors that will be implementing this year, already kind of giving them some insights and it's kind of a learn-as-you-go process.
Another way that people can receive this is just by calling into your office or our office and requesting a copy.
And we will be providing the PAFRs. The CAFRs are very limited as far as how many are, are actually printed. Hopefully, maybe we can work out something with the, the mailroom down, you know, Office Services, and maybe they'll be able to reproduce more copies.
Yeah, because like you said, it's a two-hundred-and-some page, it's pretty thick, it's, it's expensive.
Yes, yes, it is. And, and again, like, most of the copies do go to the required entities. I have to send about fifteen or so down, just down to Columbus, to different services for pass-through grants and, and alike, so.
Okay. Thank you very much and thanks to everyone that participated in putting this together.
Thank you.
A lot of effort and work put behind that. Thank you. Okay, what else do we have?
Old business? Other than what's noted?
No, I have none.
A proven entree agreement with Barbara Hoffman, Inc., Cleveland, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred plus thousand in reimbursables for professional engineering services to Lorain County Park and Garage.
It's still on hold. We're receiving alternatives for the, for the board to present alternatives and with this issue here for you to select from.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what you said. Thank you.
I said, we're, we're working on alternatives.
I got the end of it.
Okay, sorry.
New business?
I have none.
I have none. Number one, the bell casting will be held at the fairgrounds, Wellington, Ohio, on August nineteenth and twentieth. Two, administration briefing will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-six, two thousand and three, at nine-thirty, for the discussion on the Oracle system. Three, Board of Commissioners will meet on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and three, at seven PM, McCormick Middle School, two oh one, South Main Street, Wellington, Ohio, therefore, no meeting will be held that day. And four, reports given by Ron Twining, Director of Lorain County Community Development Department, one, Lorain County Port Authority, and two, two thousand and two annual report on the Community Development Department.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, T-W-I-N-I-N-G, and I'm here first as the Director of the Port Authority. And for the public's information, it's important that we at least acknowledge that the Port Authority, while created by the Board of Commissioners, it is separate and we're trying to desperately be, separate our identity through the Port Authority from the County Commissioners. It has a board of five members that directs the operation of the County Port Authority and out of the courtesy of the Board of County Commissioners, to that Port Authority Board, you have authorized two staff members of the Community Development Department to work directly on the efforts while we're establishing the Port Authority. Those two individuals are myself and Karen Johnston. Today, I am pleased to, to give you a verbal report on the efforts of the Port Authority since it's been started. It was really put together in the year two thousand and one. The Port Authority has a bond reserve fund with National City Bank in Cleveland that has two and a half million dollars in that bond reserve fund, a million and a half coming from the Port of County Commissioners, and one million that was a match from the Department of Development. And that bond reserve fund guarantees payments on any bond projects that the Port Authority puts out. I think at this juncture, it might be interesting, if not important, to note that there were basically three counties that established, or communities that established port authorities about the same time, the first one being Summit County. They really got theirs established in the year two thousand and finalized the, the necessary setup in two thousand and one. Dayton, Montgomery County, Dayton, Ohio, started theirs in two thousand and one and finished the establishment in two thousand and two. And frankly, we started ours in two thousand and one and wrapped things up in two thousand and two. Of those three entities, we were the last to enter the Port Authority arena and we were the first and so far the only port authority that has completed any projects. We have completed two to date. The first transaction being one point two four five million, yeah, one point two four five million dollars, and that was the new Visitors Bureau facility that is being built on State Route Fifty-Eight in Amherst Township. The other one was a Certificate of Participation, or COPs, and that was with the Midview Local School Districts. They are in the process of using the state and local funding to construct three elementary school buildings and that project. And our participation in that amounted to twenty million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that will be invested here in Lorain County. I might also point out, even though I've talked to her numerous times on the telephone, this is the first that I've had an opportunity to meet Barbara Vertiglierano. She has been part of the legal council, so Barb, thank you for all of your countless hours putting some of these master indentures together. She has been quite active with the setup of the, the Port Authority. In total, right now, we are working with thirteen other companies that are looking for, for assistance from the Port Authority. In a nutshell, while we have signed confidentiality agreement and cannot divulge much information, there are two of them that I think will probably be seriously looked at yet before the end of this year. One is currently working with ODOT. It is a large recreational facility, putting together in the private sector that is looking for access management in one of our townships. And we probably can do a, a lease option with those folks. And it's looking like that will be another two million dollars that we probably will be requested to, to work with. We have a company, a longstanding Lorain County company, that is, in this economic time, experiencing some real difficulty. And we feel that we may be able to acquire a portion of their existing facilities, give them twenty years. The facilities are basically paid off. We will give them twenty years to pay back the Port Authority on about a two-million-dollar facility upgrade. They will take that two million and buy new equipment and new investment and employ as many as, as retain the current workforce and employ as many as sixty-eight additional employees. And so that's some of the, the activity that the Port Authority allows us to do. Again, it's important to at least remind the public that as a county agency, because of the size of the City of Illyria and City of Lorain, they on most cases are permitted and actually do a lot of the economic development by themselves, independent of the county. We offer our services when called upon and have worked quite closely on some occasions with some of the Illyria projects. One of these is located in one of those two cities, and I think that if it was not for the County Port Authority, I'm not sure that the city of, that we are working with would be able to, to help the expansion efforts of, of this one longstanding Lorain County company. Other than that, I think I would be happy to answer any questions. We do have a, with the first project, it went out. We were anticipating, as most port authorities, a triple B-plus rating. Frankly, again, because of the Board of Commissioners and its rating, Fitch did give us a double A rating for the, the first project, and so that gave the Visitors Bureau a, a better interest rate on their return. They will make a payment to us in November and they are on schedule to do just that and will keep us current. After we established the Port Authority, there was a Western, I want to be careful here, a Western Ohio Port Authority that had a, an industry that did miss a payment and that has complicated several of the, the guarantees and letters of credits that port authorities are now obligated to give as established by the rating agencies. So when we established this, we thought we could leverage money a lot easier and, and better than what we are doing after this mispayment, which used or dipped into the, the bond reserve fund. It's an effort to make sure that our two and a half million dollars is secured, that the rating company or agencies are requiring extra due diligence on the part of, of all port authorities, not only in the state of Ohio, but other states as well. With that, I think I've hit the highlights of the progress of the last year and a half, two years. I'd be happy, on behalf of the Port Authority, to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions? No, I think it kind of speaks for itself. I want to thank you and those that have been involved with you in working on this Port Authority, which I think has a lot of opportunities to assist Lorain County.
Thank you, Ron.
It's a pleasure of the board. The next item on there is our annual report, so I'll skip into that. And then following that, I will briefly touch on the, the request that Commissioner Vacy had last week with employment numbers, and I can do this rather quickly. The annual report was finished finally. This is for the year two thousand and two. It was completed at the end of June and made available in July. Copies came over to the commissioners as well as their administrative assistants. We've mailed out copies to all of the libraries throughout Lorain County and given those as well to other departments that we either work with or hope to work with in the future. It is a breakdown both by the two divisions in our operation right now, the first one being economic development and the second one, planning and zoning. And it is, even though it appears to be six to eight months after the fact, it is a, a report identifying the work that was conducted by your department and the community development staff between January of two thousand and two and, and December of two thousand and two. And we would encourage anybody to, to look at that either through the library or if they would like a copy. We do have those available through our office. You can contact us. The number would be three-two-eight-two-three-three-zero and request a copy. You can get that either way. But it is a, a report on the efforts of the Board of County Commissioners and their Community Development Department.
Thanks again.
The last item, I have Rebecca Jones here. And I'm going to ask, I'm just giving new charts. I'm going to ask Yvonne to give the numbers to the Board of Commissioners, to Prosecutor Manning, Administrator Cordez, and the clerk of the Commissioners, Ms. Upton. The Commissioners ask for information regarding to the number of jobs that are created. If you remember, in the year two thousand, the land use plan was adopted by the County Commissioners. In that document, it was a goal that we tried to establish in Lorain County, thirty thousand new jobs between the year two thousand and two thousand and twenty. The question came up, we're about three years into that. The, the planning document cost about tw- two hundred thousand, just under two hundred thousand dollars, just under one hundred thousand dollars to produce. And there was an appropriate and very good question, how many jobs have been created? And we have prepared those numbers. That has been prepared by Rebecca Jones, that's sitting here to, to answer frankly the really tough questions. We've given the Commissioners an eight-year history so that you might have a little bit of a, a sense what is happening on a longer period. The number that we are going to be looking at is the number starting in the year nineteen ninety-nine and will go through the year two thousand and twenty ultimately. As you see from the numbers, we had, by the end of two thousand and two, we had produced one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine more jobs in Lorain County. Obviously, there were some layoffs and companies and, and operations that closed, so the number by the end of two thousand and two had actually decreased. And this is... And this is going to be a moving target. Ultimately, our goal here is not to worry so much about creating 30,000 jobs each and every year on a sequential basis over that 20-year period, but to look at trends. And I think this gives us an excellent opportunity for the Commissioners, upon their request, to see how we're doing. You can see that the year 2000, depending on which of the two reports you're following, the year 2000 and 2001 were important years and those were our peak years. And with the lag in reporting, obviously, the slowdown in the national economy has certainly been reflected in some of the numbers here in Lorain County. The two charts that the Commissioners have in front of them, all of these are involving anyone 16 years of age and older. The top chart includes those folks.
The top chart is those that are covered by unemployment.
The top chart is the one that includes those that are covered by unemployment compensation should their jobs cease or be put on furlough for a period. The bottom chart is those that are not, that are and are not covered by unemployment compensation. Another way to state that from my vantage point is the lower chart will include sole proprietors and operators like that that are not necessarily guaranteed unemployment compensation should they be laid off. Again, the numbers on the lower chart, you'll see, if you look at the benchmark of 1999 that we will be using for the next 20 years, 141,200. And the total that we had reached in 2001 had gotten up to 143,000 jobs. It has declined from that 143 to 141,400. If you look at the longer life history, 1995 to 2000, you see that the total net increase under that scenario with the sole proprietors and ag community that are family farms and things, the net increase was an increase of 2.5%. With those that are not covered, are only covered with the unemployment, the numbers are obviously smaller. But we had, over that eight-year period, a drop of total employees of 240 or a net loss of 240 over that eight-year period and the percentage change on that. There are a lot of factors that go into these reports. Rebecca has handed me charts and maps that, do we have enough copies for passing out? We'll have Rebecca pass those out to the Commissioners. I am not going to go over the charts at this point because I saw them in rough form, but I have not seen them in final form. Rebecca or I, either one can answer questions either today or in the future that the Commissioners may have. So this is a report on where the employment numbers are. The only thing in summary that I would say is that we have compared our numbers with the state of Ohio and we're holding our own with the state's average. We have also compared our numbers with the Cleveland region, and we're actually doing much better than the Cleveland region. So I think that, again, a lot of credit should be given to the Board of Commissioners for making the level of investment that they have because it certainly has helped. I would hate to think what the numbers might be like in Lorain County had we not made or you had not made this investment to help create and expand businesses here in Lorain County. Are there questions at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
We have five minutes. And earlier today, Richard Corbin, Vice President of the Rolling Thunder in Ohio Chapter Six, came in and spoke with me. And I'd like to give him at least three, four minutes, whatever we have here until our next scheduled appointment here, a few minutes to speak with us.
Yes, good morning. My name is Richard Corbin. I'm Vice President of Rolling Thunder, Ohio Chapter Six. I'd like to make a statement that we're not a road motorcycle club or anything like that. We're a POW MIA awareness organization. We're the ones that lobby the federal government all year long for a full accounting of all our POW MIA's. We're also involved with helping homeless veterans and disabled veterans from all wars. Right now, we're currently working with about 80 that live in the woods. And we see a great need for a, oh, I'd say a shelter like the Green Acres in Oberlin to house these people. And the need is getting greater and greater all the time. I've been out doing volunteer work now for over 30 years. I've been working the streets for 10 years, and I've been working in the woods for two years. And we helped feed over 2,000 last year and just our organization itself.
Are you talking about just Lorain County people?
Yes, Lorain County, ma'am. The homeless, they travel from Florida all the way up through Lorain, all the way to Wisconsin. They travel from the East Coast, the Carolinas and Georgia. Some states like Georgia and Idaho run the homeless completely out of the state, you know. And most people right now are just a paycheck or two away from being there themselves. I found myself that way. I'm suffering from age and range, and I was housebound and bedridden for over three years. And I've suffered four strokes. And I've been helping more, the more disabled people that really need the assistance out there. Most of the people don't know where to get assistance, whether they're veterans or non-veterans. And the homeless shelter we have in Lorain will only house 68. So if you have a family that comes in there, the mother and the children usually can stay, but the father has to go out on the street because there's no room for them in there. And we're also working with the Lorain County Task Force for the Homeless, work with the Ohio Veterans Services, and Ohio Job Family Services as volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Wilder, I'm President of the Rolling Thunder, Ohio Chapter Six. What Rich said is true. We put in anywhere from 50 to 70 hours a week of our own volunteer time on the street to help the homeless, a lot of them vets, some of them non-vets. If you see, when you get out there to help these people, the smile and the tears in their eyes, they can put the tears in our eyes. It's a great need for, in Lorain County, for transitional centers in Lorain for the homeless. You get them back to where they can walk down the street, their heads up high and proud again. A lot of these people lost their jobs due to companies shutting down, due to illness. If they're in a transitional center, what we like to see done is a two-year program. They will go through training for one year, get back into the job market. In the second year, they will go to work. A percentage of their paycheck will be trying to turn over to the transitional center to be put in to account for them. At the end of the second year, they'll be able to go out, get an apartment, be able to walk down the street and be proud and pay taxes like everybody else, which Trump pays all county, city, federal, and state salaries, is all from taxpayers. Thank you.
Wait, just a minute. Can you please give your name again and spell it because this is being televised and they would like to have you give your name and then spell it.
Gary Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R.
I was going to tell you, you mentioned Green Acres, but you realize, Green Acres has, 75% of that has to be used for children.
Yes, we do. There's a lot of homeless, complete homeless families out there, but also at the homeless shelter, the homeless is only going to stay there for 30 days and they're back out in the street. They have nowhere to go. There's a lot of vacant buildings also in Lorain and that within, throughout Lorain County. Some are schools, which has got kitchens, has got shower facilities. You know, a lot of these buildings could be turned into transitional homes for the homeless and get them back into the working market. Instead of them sitting out on the street and, you know, in the winter, they try and they, some of them are lucky, they get into overnight shelter, they're back out in the street at 6:00 in the morning, can't go back at 7:00 in the evening. Pretty cold out there the last couple winters. Anybody in this room, even the Commissioners, that I've talked to people, that try and say, "Oh, no, I got $80,000 in the bank. I'll never be homeless." If you've got a mortgage, you've got a car payment, you're homeless. If you lose your job, you're one paycheck away.
Okay, I agree. I'd like to talk with both of you further and get with, I don't know, someone from the homeless centers, maybe Paul Pacino, and see what we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and thanks for coming here. Okay, Madam Clerk, next thing on the agenda?
Mr. Manning, the Lorain County Screening and Diversion Program. Card me? If you wouldn't mind. Can we take a five-minute break and check our calendars for availability? Do you mind? No, what, please? Okay, if you don't mind.
We have a five-minute break?
Okay, we, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I guess we're going to go out of order for a minute because the judge is going to speak before the prosecutor. She has a case going and needs to get out of here as soon as possible.
Are we going to resolve these sewer issues before we do that or not?
Well, let's get this out of the way and then we'll go back to that. Judge McGuff, would you please take the podium?
Ah, we have a podium. The first thing that I want to bring to the Commissioners' attention is that when I first took the bench in 1989, we had a diversion program. Then we stopped the diversion program, and we currently have one that was put into effect on, I think, about April the 4th of the year 2000. It has been put in effect for one time. I have reviewed the proposal that Mr. Manning sent over, as have the Judges. And in fact, I speak to you in my capacity as presiding judge. And I will tell you that the Judges have met, we have reviewed Mr. Manning's proposal. There is no one on the bench who is opposed to diversion in principle. But it does seem, from comments that I have heard, frankly, from people outside the justice system, from maybe some of the questions that the Commissioners might have, and particularly from the media, that most people do not understand what a diversion program does and what the impact on the criminal justice system is. So I've prepared a handout for you today, and I just want to kind of run through it with you very, very quickly. The way that diversion works is it is a post-indictment program. In Lorain County, the County Prosecutor's Office specifically provides services to the Lorain County Court of Common Pleas. Mr. Manning, I think, will agree with me that his office does not provide services to the municipal courts in the Lorain County jurisdiction. They have their own municipal prosecutors. So a diversion program would be post-indictment. And again, as I've indicated to you, and as I tell every jury panel, every criminal case begins with the filing of an indictment for felony purposes. And so indictments would be filed both if a case is going to diversion or if it is going through the normal process. They would both come to arraignment. Pre-trial conferences between prosecutor and defense would look at discovery issues. And the discovery issues are the place where a determination would be made of those offenders who would be considered for diversion. Remember that the first recommendation for diversion would come from the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor, in a felony case, and we have excellent felony prosecutors in all of our courtrooms who know their cases very well, the prosecutor would know, one, that the offense is an eligible offense. And I've kind of generally ballparked, and I think Mr. Manning has done a very detailed preparation for you of offenses that would be eligible for diversion, but they are essentially low-level felony fours and fives, non-violent offenses, not drug crimes. All of our drug crimes have a program that's specifically designed for drug crimes called intervention in lieu of conviction, which frankly parallels diversion. But we would be looking at non-violent four and five eligible offenders. Once the prosecutor determines that the offense is eligible, the prosecutor then looks to see if the offender is eligible. The offender must have no prior record. They must have previously, I think the statute refers to some kind of generic language about having lived a law-abiding life, and that this case arises out of circumstances that are not likely to recur. At that time, we would ask for a diversion report. Diversion reports, and I have done some checking before I came over here to discuss this with you, Unit Two of the State Probation Department, that's the same unit that currently does the pre-sentence investigations under the normal process. They have agreed to do diversion reports for at least a period of six months, and I'm going to come back to why that six-months number is important. Now, again, if you look at the graphic that I've done, there's no impact on the system. We're not seeing more cases, we're not seeing fewer cases. Both cases, because under the normal process, anyone who's eligible for screening and diversion is going to, as a practical matter, receive probation at the time of sentencing. Remember, these are low-level, non-violent offenses where the offender has no prior record. Nobody's going to be sending this person to prison. They're going to be placed on community control sanctions. So we're still going to be doing the reports. The impact on the probation department would be the same. Now, the way that the diversion program should work is that when the report comes back, a plea should be entered. The defendant pleads guilty and is referred to the diversion programming. And right now, diversion supervision can be done by any appropriate agency, and the appropriate agency that the Judges have determined is the Lorain County Adult Probation Department. That's Mike Willetts', his unit. Why are we taking a plea? We're taking a plea, quite frankly, as a practical matter. I don't think it's a requirement of the statute, neither does the statute preclude it. But we're talking about felony fours and fives. We're talking about fairly low-level offenses. If the offender does not successfully complete, if a plea is taken and the case comes back to court, it goes directly to sentencing. That's the process we use in our screening and diversion programs. If we don't take the plea, then it comes back to the place where it was on the docket, which is in the pre-trial stage, which forces Mr. Manning's prosecutors to go back and try to construct a felony case where they have the burden of proof with maybe two-year-old evidence, maybe witnesses who have moved, maybe things that haven't been saved or kept just because of time and space and that sort of thing. So we believe that there would be a tremendous difficulty in placing people on probation in an open case without a plea. And frankly, the entry that we currently have would need to be amended in that regard, and we are more than prepared to do that. However, for your purposes, there's still no impact on the system. Again, the advantage of a diversion program to the offender is that if they successfully complete the program, the case is dismissed. Now, as I told you a few minutes ago, every criminal case begins with the filing of an indictment. Every criminal case ends with the sentencing of the offender. If we do not go to sentencing and the case is dismissed prior to sentencing, then this offender has no felony record. And that's the advantage of diversion. The advantage is procedural, it's not- The advantage is procedural, it's not substantive, and the advantage to the offender is this person can serve a term of probation, not go to sentencing, and have their case dismissed. And as many of you are aware, and as just makes plain old-fashioned common sense, there are lots of things where having a felony record or not having a felony record impacts one's lifestyle. So the advantage to the offender is they can complete the process and have no felony record. The benefit to the community is this is a person who has demonstrated, both by their prior lifestyle and their successful completion of a diversion program, that they are unlikely to be re-involved in the criminal justice system. So I think it's a win-win situation for everyone. Now, I think that in Mr. Manning's original request for diversion, he talked about something like 1,230 eligible offenses last year, and is that about right, Jeff?
About 1,200.
Yeah. And I think that that's true. I think we probably had about 1,200 and something eligible offenses. But I can tell you, and as I believe Mr. Manning will tell you, that there, it's not just the offense, but the offender that must be eligible, and that there is no way we had anywhere close to that number of eligible offenders. For example, a theft coming through the normal process at the felony level means, in many instances, that there's been a prior conviction at the municipal level, that's how it got to be a felony theft, is because this offender has a prior record. So although the offense may qualify, the offender does not. So in looking at this, I would make a couple of suggestions to the commissioners. We can't give you any accurate numbers. And, you know, I've been coming over here now for 15 or so years, and as I talk with my colleagues around the state, I think that in Lorain County, we've been very, very blessed to have had a good working relationship between the commissioners and the courts, as the commissioners know, because they go to the same conferences I do, that's not the case around the state of Ohio. And I like to believe that one of the reasons that we have the relationship that we have with the county commissioners is because we try to come over here and we try to give you the very best information that we have, and we try not to ask for things prematurely. And I think our position is that what we need to do is we need to, one, tweak the existing entry a bit to make clear that we need to take a plea of guilty, that there needs to be a request for diversion by the prosecutor and frankly, by the defense, and we need to get a diversion report, and if diversion is going to be offered, then we need to take a plea of guilty. And I don't think that's philosophically something you're opposed to, is it, Jeff?
It's part of the proposal, Judge.
It's part of your proposal.
Yes.
And I think we need to take that, and we need to add it to the existing proposal, and then we need to run a pilot program for six months. We would use State Unit Two to do the diversion reports. State Unit Two of the Adult Probation Department is, of course, state-funded, so there is, frankly, no increase in their workload, which is why they're willing to do it, and there is no budget impact. We will use Mike Willetts' Adult Probation Department for the six-month trial run, and then we can sit down with Mr. Manning, Mr. Willetts, and the State Probation people, take a look at what we've got, and come back to you in six months with hard numbers. And then, of course, perhaps Mr. Manning can also come back to you with what the impact on his staff has been, Mr. Willetts can tell you what the impact on his probation officers has been, and I'll tell you now that my expectation is it will not make any difference in the docket numbers, pro or con. Again, these are not cases that get strung out, these are cases where it's going to be, as a practical matter, probation anyway. And so what I would suggest to the commissioners at this time, with Mr. Manning's consent, is that we tweak the existing entry a bit, and I think that we have a pretty good working relationship with the prosecutor's office, I don't think there'd be a problem in doing that, and that we actually run the program for six months, and then we come back to you in the event that additional resources are needed. I don't believe there are any additional resources needed at this time until we can come back with some legitimate numbers. And now I'm prepared to take any questions that the commissioners may have.
Any questions?
Are you responding?
Yeah.
I think I would like to hear the prosecutor's response to your suggestions, Judge.
Okay. I've got some extra copies if press want them, and I'll leave them over there.
Judge McGuff, I want to thank you. I needed to hear what you had to say, thank you.
Thank you for having me here this morning, and your patience in listening to this proposal once again. The last time I sat in for Jerry, we had a brief, unexpected discussion of this program, so I think I've said, I covered sort of the outside borders of the box at that time, but I submitted to you for your review a draft of a more detailed proposal, and I'm here this morning to try to discuss that with you and answer your questions. First of all, I'd like to thank Judge McGuff and the other members of the General Division of the Court for taking the time to look at this and for their support of the diversion idea. I think it's important that we be creative in what we do here in Lorain County because of what we're facing in terms of our docket numbers, and I think diversion is one of those types of programs we can take a look at, and with our goal in sight, that public safety of the community of Lorain County is our first and foremost concern. The judge, I think, gave you a pretty good overview of what diversion is. Let me, I'm going to go through a little bit of a discussion again, and if I retrace some ground, I apologize. There is an existing diversion program in Lorain County. It's been in existence for quite some time, and it was used in one case, and it was specifically designed for one case, and it hasn't been used since then. Our proposal takes that concept and expands it. What we're doing with, what our proposal does with the diversion program is to make it, change the scope of the program from one case, one eligible case, to a pool of cases that could be a substantial number. The judge referred to an attachment to my proposal that was distributed that indicated that there could be as high as 1,200 eligible cases.
Eligible offenses.
Eligible offenses, thank you, Judge. Now, we all know that's not realistic, that figure is going to be substantially reduced by taking a look at who is actually eligible for the program for different reasons. A lot of these eligible offenses are contained in multiple count indictments that would disqualify the individual. A lot of these are second offense type cases, second offense theft offenses and other types of cases that would substantially pare those numbers down. What that final number is, our statistical information isn't equipped to tell us, so we don't know. But let's assume, for the sake of argument, that there's going to be between 100 and 200 cases eligible for the diversion program. I think that's probably a fair, reasonable figure, and it's probably a conservative figure. If we analyze those types of cases and their eligibility and the impact on our offices, you can see that it could have a substantial impact. 200 cases is a pretty heavy caseload for any probation office to be expected to integrate into their current system without some sort of financial support. 200 cases off of a common pleas court docket could be helpful in a number of ways. The judge described her vision of how the cases would work through the system, and I don't think in the final document that we all agree to, it's going to be much different. One of the things that we insist on in our office, and which is a diversion from the current program that's in place, is that we insist that the individual enter a plea of guilty at the beginning of the case. And that accomplishes a couple of things. One of the things it accomplishes is it encourages the person to take some responsibility for their actions, so they're entering a plea of guilty. Now, that plea of guilty has a couple other effects. It makes them conditionally eligible for the program if they meet some of our other requirements. I envision the program is that they apply for admission in the program, we review the application, we prescreen it in our office with our administrator of the program, and we determine their initial eligibility. That, in my mind, would take the case out of, off the active docket of the court, send it over for review by probation to determine their final eligibility for the program, if they meet the conditions of the program that they're going to be required to agree to. So they enter a plea of guilty, and then they agree to the conditions of the program. And what that essentially does is move a probational offense from the end of the docket to the beginning of the docket. If you're going to wind up in community control sanctions at the end, why not move that to the beginning? Take it off the court's active docket, let it be screened, let these people meet the conditions and agree to meet the conditions, and if they fail in meeting the conditions, then they go back into court for sentencing, because they've, remember, they've already pled guilty to the offense. So we're eliminating a number of intermediary steps in the currently existing process. And we went and looked at our statistics, but again, we're not set up to try to pull all these statistics off, so it took quite a bit of work for us to determine what the average number of court hearings there are in a typical criminal case that our office processes, and we've come to the conclusion that there's about 10 to 12 hearings in the average case. Now, that surprised me, I thought there was probably five or six, but there's actually 10 to 12. If you move someone into a diversion program, you can probably pare that down to three court appearances, because if they are successful in the program, there's a journal entity that's going to be signed without the necessity of a hearing that dismisses the case. If they fail in the program, they're going to come in at the end of the process and immediately move to sentencing. So you're eliminating a lot of these intermediary pre-trials that currently happen in a typical case. Now, analyze the effect of that. If you eliminate, if you have 200 cases, a pool of 200 potential cases, and you eliminate nine to 10 hearings in a case, what's the impact of that? Well, the impact is substantial in a lot of different areas. The impact on the commissioner's obligation for court-appointed attorney fees changes. The number of hours of people sitting around in the hallway at the courthouse changes. So your cost to subpoena witnesses, your cost for overtime for officers to sit at these hearings, there's a lot of what you might consider unanticipated benefits of this type of a program that translate into financial savings for the county. Now, these financial savings are quickly eaten up by what I see are the costs to implement a program like this. And I gave you what I considered to be a shot at an initial budget the first time I was here, and you saw that that was over $200,000. We've taken another look at it and tried to hit some of the targets that we missed initially, and that probably that original projection should have been more in the area, 236,000, because we left off some personnel costs that should have been brought into that formula. But by re-analyzing what we could do internally at our office, we've eliminated some of the positions that we thought would initially be created. The positions are still there, but we're absorbing them internally. What we've done is we've realigned our administrative staff, and we've reassigned duties within the office, so people are picking up additional duties within our office to free up Marty Ebel, who's our most experienced administrator, to take over this program. So Marty now has, some of his duties have been reassigned within the office, people are working a little harder, and we're able to take that portion of the budget for a project administrator out of the budget. And with that, we're able to reduce, that and some of the other costs we've eliminated, we've been able to reduce this projection down to probably $123,000. And what composes that figure is a figure given to me by Mr. Willetts of the costs necessary for him, what he felt the projected costs of an entry-level probation officer would be. We added to that the general fund expenses of the hospitalization, we've added a secretary, and then we've added the startup costs, and that budget's set out for you pretty clearly in the exhibits that we attached to our proposal. Mr. Willetts suggested, as late as yesterday, that we might want to add a couple thousand dollars for mileage, which we didn't have into the original proposal. So that brings what we think a realistic budget for this program would be about $123,000. That savings, or that cost, can quickly be addressed by some of these soft savings that we addressed earlier. If you take, just as an example, if you take 200 cases and you multiply that by 10 hearings, you've got 2,000 hearings a year, if you multiply that by $50 a hearing for a court-appointed attorney, that's a savings of $100,000 just on those costs. Now, that's not an accurate figure, it's just a figure that we're doing by just extrapolating some of the figures. It's probably less than that, but it gives you an idea of how the costs can add up. Then you add to that your subpoena costs, your service costs, uncollected costs and fines that we would insist be paid as one of the conditions of the diversion program, and some of the costs that the commissioners wouldn't save, but would be saved by the other governmental agencies in the county, which could be the overtime costs for having people sit in the hallway. The program would more than justify itself in terms of the expenditures required. The judge made some good suggestions, and I've had some discussion with the other judges in the General Division. And if you notice, the proposal that you had in front of you, every page was designated as a draft. And the reason that we did that was because we wanted dialogue to begin on this issue, we wanted suggestions, and we wanted to be able to integrate everybody's suggestions into this program, and here's what we've done. First and foremost is, we require the plea of guilty, which is a substantial change from the program that exists today. Second of all, if you read our proposal, it requires the consent of the court. The statutory formula for this type of a program doesn't include that, those parameters. It's a prosecutor's program under the statutory scheme. We've broadened it to bring in the other constituencies that we feel are important to this program, one of which is our fine bench that we have in this county. We have some terrific common pleas police court judges, and their input is going to be essential into who gets into this program and what happens when they, if they happen to fail. The other two constituencies we've brought into this program are the police agencies, who will be investing a substantial amount of time into investigating these crimes, and they have an investment in what happens in the case. Their input is required under the program we've submitted, as is the victim's input. So the three constituencies, other than the prosecutor's office, we've brought into this, and I think that's a very important tweaking of the statutory plan that exists So will everybody have input? Yes, they will. This isn't a program that the prosecutor's office intends to implement and run rough shot over all the other constituencies and implement. We just don't have that as a concept, nor do we ever have that. Would an interim program work? Well, I think there are some difficulties with that sort of approach, and let me tell you what I believe that they are. In order to implement a program like this, it takes a substantial amount of realignment within our office in order to accomplish this. We've already begun that with reassigning of administrative duties. We've also tried to accomplish some savings to the county by requesting a part-time attorney rather than a full-time attorney, and we're able to do that by reassigning some duties also within our office. We're going to have to have facilities, we're going to have to have secretaries, there's going to, depending on how successful this is, there could be an administrative burden that would be unfair to place upon either the probation department or our office without some funding to help us accommodate those changes. I didn't dream, a lot of these figures are speculative in nature, but the one that isn't is the probation figure. That came directly from Mr. Willetts, and it's a direct response to our discussions with him about the financial impact on providing a probation officer, even at an entry level. at an entry level. The goals of this program aren't simply just to have a diversion program. The goals of this program are to, to help. And this help runs across a couple of lines. It's, it's not only a, a help to the county in terms of what we feel it may help do in terms of stemming the tide on the, on the growth of our figures. As I said earlier, this isn't a solution to anything, it's just an idea that may, may help. The other thing it does is it gets low-level defendants out of the system, gets them out early, gives them an opportunity to rectify their prior behavior and to go on with their lives without a felony conviction that, that could affect their civil rights in a number of ways. We want to help people who've made a one-time mistake recover from that, and this helps do that. So, I think the program's a good program. The way it exists today is, it's inadequate to fulfill the, the goals that I think we're all trying to accomplish. The budget, I think, is a necessity. We're doing it, trying to implement this program on a, on an interim basis doesn't make as much sense to me as to getting the ball rolling on the program and, and getting it in place. I know the commissioners are concerned with today's budgetary issues and, and the, the climate of the economy in the county with costs, and I think I've tried to address how we may, is, this may self-fund itself in a number of ways. Be happy to answer your questions, whatever the commissioners might have. I'm, I'm open to discussion with anybody who would like to question, have any questions about the program.
I'm going to want to respond.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to want to respond to Mr. Manning's comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. First, when the diversion program, and I don't want to make any comments, whatever, about what Mr. Manning needs to operate his office. He may very well need an additional budget, and that's up to you to determine. What I do want to talk about is screening and diversion. When last we had a screening and diversion program, it was run by Richard Bowdler, who is the bailiff to Judge Janus, who is not an attorney. The attorney input on diversion cases should come from the felony prosecutor handling the case. The second thing I want to point out is that there is no impact on the adult probation services because the number of cases is identical, whether they are diversion or whether they are community-controlled. The same person is going to have one or the other, so there is no impact on the adult probation services. Secondly, diversion reports can and should be done by the adult state probation department. These are the people who specialize. As a part of the format they use, they get input from the victim, they get input from law enforcement, they get input from all of the stakeholders. That's all completed in the program, in the report that is provided. And if the commissioners would like, I could show you such a pre-sentence investigation and report. I also want to tell you that the diversion program, which was put in place by Greg Swite's office, has been used one time. It has been used one time because that's the prosecutor's choice. The prosecutor has not sought to implement it. It was not designed for one case. It is a recitation of the statute. It is a recitation of the Ohio Revised Code. Now, it could be used. It hasn't been used. And I guess the thing that bothers me most, because again, I feel like when we come to you and we ask for things, we should be able to give you information you need to make this decision. As commissioners, you certainly have the ability to increase Mr. Manning's budget in any way that you think appropriate and in any way that he needs. However, you can't implement a screening and diversion program. The statute requires that the, that it be done by journal entry, signed by the presiding judge of the common police court. So that would be me. And our rule throughout the common police bench is a three-pre-trial rule. I have not had a hearing that required a subpoena in a case that would qualify for And I don't, I can't remember one. We sometimes have suppression hearings in drug cases where we subpoena police officers to come in. But drug cases don't qualify for diversion. They qualify for intervention in lieu. We don't, I have not had 10 pre-trials in a felony four or five case, and then let's say there's an arraignment, let's say there's a first pre-trial, there's a second pre-trial, there's going to be a decision. And I don't know, Judge Zaleski, on four or five, felony fours and fives, do you have 10 or 12 hearings where you would have people coming in pursuant to subpoena?
Pre-trials. Mr. Clamore knows all about those pre-trials.
You have pre-trials.
On City Monday.
But you, you're not subpoenaing anyone in?
No.
So we're not serving subpoenas, we're not having hearings, we're not calling folks in. So, I think that before, I want to come to you and talk about how many and what kind, I want to have some numbers. I want to know how many cases, and, and I certainly don't have any problem keeping statistics about how much time, how many, how many cases in court, what kinds of hearings, if any, are involved, and presenting you with those kinds of numbers. And I really would say to all of you that I think we all benefit if we're looking at a diversion program. And again, I want to separate entirely Mr. Manning's budget, which is your role and your responsibility, and I have no opinion, nor do the judges offer any suggestions. That's between you and Mr. Manning. But what I do want to talk about is a diversion program. And so with that, my remarks are concluded, and if there's anything else that anyone needs from me, I'll be happy to, to do that. Be happy to provide whatever you need.
Thank you, Judge. I guess I'll respond to the judge.
Well, you can have blast up, Jeff. I'm glad you're here.
Thanks, Judge. This, this, of course, isn't intended to be any sort of an adversarial climate with the judges at all, as I understand it, the judges support the program pretty much universally. Some of the details of the program naturally have to be worked out, and that's why, that's why our, our proposal to you is designated as a draft. There's a number of things that are going to be changed in that before it reaches its final form. But one of the things that won't change is, you know, I don't know what the subpoena costs are, and I didn't quote any subpoena costs to you. The figure I quoted to you were court-appointed attorney's fees, who, who, which, which, some of that responsibility, I, I would guess, falls on the commissioner's shoulders. And there may be a resulted savings in, in those areas. And I don't know. I don't know. But, and, and there may be, and if there is, it reduces the cost of what we think is a good program. I didn't dream up these, these budget figures. This came from Mr. Willetts, who's, who is going to have the responsibility of monitoring these cases. I do know that if you reduce the number of, of court hearings, it, it results in a lot of intangible savings. And there's a lot of savings that, that we can't quantify at this time. But let's use, let's apply a common sense approach to this. And if you, if you wind up with 200 cases and you save even, let's, let's assume for the sake of argument that ju, the judge is correct, that maybe we, our, our, our average figure is, is incorrect, let's reduce that by half, let's save, you save five hearings per case. Say I'm half-wrong on what our office statistics show. What's the savings there? What's the savings in terms of, of resources we can direct in a different, a different direction? And that direction could be to the, the more serious felonies that are on the court's docket and are on our trial docket with our prosecutors. So there's some intangibles that none of us will ever be able to quantify. I, I, I think everybody recognizes that for a prosecutor, there's a somewhat of a risk even proposing a, a program like this. So, you know, to get into a, a debate over the effectiveness of it, you know, I, it doesn't help me a bit. I think the program has some positive ramifications. They're positive for the county, they're positive for the courts, they're positive for the prosecutor's office, and they're positive for the, the citizens of the county, and that's who we serve. We serve the, the residents of the county. And if we keep in mind that public safety is the most important issue, I think we could all live with a diversion program structured around the broad parameters I've given you. In order to implement that, we feel we need some dollars to do it, and that's why I'm here, not to debate the program at all, because the judges and I can put that together without the, without the intervention of the commissioners at all. We're here talking about money. And I support Judge McGuff, and I support the common police judges and their, their need for dollars to run their programs. In fact, out of our forfeiture dollars, we've, we've contributed to the treatment in lieu program by trying to keep in place the screening that occurs there. So we're, we're on board with these efforts, and we're on board not only spiritually, philosophically, but we're on board financially. And what we're asking for, from the commissioners, is, is the financial part of that equation so that we can get this program up and running in a fashion that, that benefits the county. And I'd be, I haven't answered any questions from anybody yet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
How come, how come she seemed upset about the whole thing? It sounds like she's the only one that makes the decisions. Now, of all the common police judges, I guess she's the presiding judge? So she's the one that has to make that decision?
Not so, B.
Okay, I didn't understand her statement, that's why. Sorry, Judge. No, I just misunderstood because the way it was...
[inaudible]
No, no, no. Huh? Oh, Hal got him?
Yeah.
No, all she does is sign it.
Oh, wow.
Oh, man.
And, oh...
And if you really want to, to get, to get less cases, we need a sixth judge. And that's what here, Tom, I'm here to address.
That's kind of how I got started.
If you're done with Mr. Manning.
Well, listen, uh, let me, let me address that real quickly. I agree with Judge Zaleski. We, we, our, our docket numbers are growing, and, and they're going to continue to grow. We're very fortunate that we live in a county that has growth on the horizon for us. So we're, we're, we're going to be in trouble here in, in, in the coming years. And I think we all agree that, that, that another judge is going to be necessary. The finances are challenging, we know that. Getting it on the ballot is going to be challenging, we know that. I'm working with the judge and the other judges in the court to try to make that happen. Timing is the issue there. One of the reasons that I've come forward with a diversion program is to try to, to help us bridge that gap between now and when we get that, that new judge.
So what I'm hearing here, excuse me...
Well, she didn't answer my question, though. Did you, did she mean it sounded like she is the only one that can sign it up?
She does sign it, that's what...
But he said he missed, but, you know, I wouldn't...
Well, I think if we put a little pressure on her from the four other judges, she'll sign anything.
Okay, so I'm not here...
Or we could have another vote. And always elect a new presiding judge.
Excuse me, Judge Zaleski, are you negotiating here?
No, nothing at all.
Ah.
No, 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 that's all, okay. I don't want to get involved in what's going on across the street, that we're going to step back.
Okay.
That's all we're doing, then. I don't want to get involved, I'm...
It's going to work. It'll work.
All right, so what I'm hearing...
The diversion program will work.
All right, but what I'm hearing, Judge, is that we're going to put, they're requesting the funding, 200-some thousand dollars for this program, right?
I don't think it's that high. I think 120-some thousand dollars...
Well, 120-some thousand, whatever it is.
What, what, what we really need, though, is somebody to, to help Mike Willetts out. We, we have a diversion program now called the Intervention in Lieu of Treatment of Conviction, and it's where a, a, a low-level drug person with charge with a felony four or five comes forward, pleads guilty, we send them, if they qualify, they have to be not convicted of any felonies in the past. They plead guilty, they're sent over to Mike Willetts's unit, and we have somewhere around 90 of those cases pending now, and we've not asked for any additional help there. But if we're going to get the diversion, people coming in, and whether it's 100 cases, 50 cases, or 75, that escalates to close to 200 people that, that they're going to be taken and monitoring for a period of one year. And we need some help there, so. And this is what I believe Jeff wants, a, another probation officer to help Mr. Willis's unit, and pursuant to the statute, that's where it belongs.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is, we're, we're talking about another judge anyway, and a 100-some thousand dollar program here, plus the expense of an additional judge, which I think you mentioned in two years, you'll be back for the...
Yes, it did. Well, I believe Judge McGuff addressed that issue. It, it really, you know, we still see these people, you know, they still have pre-trials, they still have to plead guilty, we have to refer them, we have to bring them back for another sentencing, for a hearing to see if they qualify. If they qualify, then we send them on our way, just like granting them probation. And they're there for a year, if they, if they, they don't behave themselves, they're back into the system, and we, you know, we're still sentencing them. So the number is not on the docket sheet, but the caseload is there. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning the diversion program?
No.
And if you'd like to hear about my sixth judge?
Maybe two years.
It'll be five minutes, trust me, it's not long. Anyhow, we hit you, we submitted the proposal to you in March of 2003 for a sixth judge. The numbers at the end of 2002, we had an average of about 716 cases pending. Since that time, we've probably had about 740. So it just keeps going up. And I'm not going to bore you with the numbers, they're there. I just want to tell you that the, the editors of both local newspapers have supported the proposal for a sixth judge. The Bar Association has supported the, the proposal for a new judge. Our new county prosecutor and the old county prosecutor supported the sixth judge. The only thing we're lacking is the support from the county commissioners. The Supreme Court has suggested, we've met with them on numerous occasions, they suggested we needed a sixth judge. Now, I understand, one of the problems is that the budget. I understand that the, the county may be strapped, the state of Ohio is certainly strapped. So we wanted this to be passed this year for a judge to be elected in 2004 to take the bench in 2005. Being realistic, the judges are going to suck it up for another two years, hopefully. And if we could get some support from the commissioners to have a judge, ask for a judge at the state level in the, to be elected in the year 2006 to take the, to seat in 2007, that's our, sort of our olive branch, or, or, our good faith showing to the commissioners that we're willing to play along with it. In addition, Mr. Manning, being the legislature that he was, has been talking to, to Columbus. They appreciate it. The Supreme Court says that they will offer us a visiting judge if we need it on a continuing basis. And the good thing about that is, is that it costs the county nothing for that judge to visit. It's all paid for by the Supreme Court. They do want us to have a secretary or a bailiff for the judge if, if one is, if one is going to be seated, and I see no, no, no problem with that. The bailiff, we could always accommodate from, from one of our own staff. So with that, I urge you to at least pass a resolution for a judge to be elected in the year 2006. And, and I'm not going to bore you with the statistics, you already have those. The numbers, we've read about those in the newspapers, I got my version, and you have your version, and it's, it's probably somewhere in the middle of that, I, I just don't know. In addition to that, what we really like is, in most counties, they have an administrator. As the commissioners well know, if you look to your right, you see Mr. Cordez. And without Mr. Cordez, I'm sure the commissioner's work would be extremely difficult. He's the coordinator. We have some 53 employees in, in our system, and the brunt of that is thrust upon the administrative judge. So I have to take my time to, to tend to all the problems. My secretary, and I don't have an extra secretary, she does all the payroll, keeps up track of that, and she does all of the problems that has to arise. And with that, we, we truly need an administrator to coordinate and to at least have somebody sit here on behalf of the judges for each of your meetings, rather than seeing the judge, and when a judge walks in, he says, "Oh, what the heck does he want now?" So with that, I, the, I'm going to let Tim Looby address the issue concerning an administrator. I just want to tell you that we do have the room for him in a new, in the new courthouse. There's a visiting judge's chambers there that could be occupied by an administrator and a secretary. So with that, Mr. Looby, would you like to...
Good morning, commissioners. I, I would like to do the same thing, don't want to bore you with the statistics. We've sent over in the past a, a description of the duties and responsibilities that we would expect of our court administrator, and you should have that... would expect of our court administrator, and you should have that in front of you. I'm really here to answer any questions you may have, as far as the expectations you would have of this individual. I mean, I think we can easily justify this individual as a economic savings to the court and in turn to the county. As the judge indicated, we have 53 employees that are under the control of the General Division Court. So everything from payroll to human resource issues would fall within this individual's gamut, as well as things like purchasing and grants. We were hoping that this individual can give us assistance in that respect. And again, when you're making purchasing issues for five separate courts and hopefully down the road, six courts, we're hoping to get a little bit more cohesion in that process and in turn keep costs down and make the courts a little bit more efficient. So I would be prepared to respond to any questions that you may have.
I would like to judge through you to suggest when he would like this position, most expeditiously to be filled?
Unfortunately, yes. Our issue right now is space. Physically, we don't have a location for this individual. As we are making the transition over, and we need this individual now to assist us, we could truly use this individual as we're making the transition over into the new Justice Center. So our proposal would truly be, would request that we actually get funding for this position as well as a secretary now, and then it would be our responsibility to find a physical location for this individual to sit in until we get over to the new facility. We do anticipate housing this individual up on the seventh floor in a visiting courtroom so there wouldn't be any additional physical space requirements.
This all got started probably back in March, when Judge Zaleski was requesting a sixth judge.
That's correct. We actually had...
And that's when I actually started saying, "Well, is there any other way?" And that's when all the discussion started. I basically let everybody know how I feel. I think the diversion program, I support that wholeheartedly. I support, and I think you do need a court administrator. I think it's working well in the domestic relations, and I think you guys have two more actual judges, and I don't see how you've operated without it.
Yeah.
I think you do need that support, and if those step one, step two happens, then I will support a judge in '07. So just to let you know my position.
Thank you.
Would you run by that again, please? Step one and step two? Would you repeat it? So I can, no, no, no.
Play the tape back, is that what judges do?
No, can't you, can't you just, geez, David, come on.
No, I'm just saying that when this all started, I'm not going to have arguments or discussions because everyone has their own opinions, but a fact of fact, I believe we were looking at different ways to save the county. Mr. Rook's, these numbers I seem to support, and I think that the county can't afford a new judge today, which in effect would happen in two years. I'm trying to figure out a way to buy time for the county, and I think '06 might be an appropriate time to have a sixth judge. But I feel that the diversion program, I supported it because I think it does alleviate the dockets, but I don't know. They, I think the prosecutors and the judges, it sounds like they agree to it, and it sounds like it's just a funding issue. So if that's all it is, then I'll support the funding issue, and I'll also support the court administrator, because I don't see how they're operating without one. And if that's what's going to take to keep everybody, I think to alleviate what's going on over there, I think they need, I think they need a court administrator now to help with the move. That's in itself, I think is going to be difficult with five different judges trying to move at the same time with the dockets and everything. I just, I think now is the time to hire a court administrator for the judges. So, and in doing so, if, you know, one or two happens, then I'm in all support of '07.
Do we have figures on the court administrator position?
Thank you for... The court administrator be compensated at the same rate as the staff attorneys are currently compensated.
And that is?
That's $68,000 or so.
For one person?
For one person, correct.
Plus benefits.
We would also, I think also, maybe as a compromise, again, space is an issue, we would anticipate the court administrator would need the assistance of a secretary. I think, like I said, as a compromise, maybe it would be, commissioners would consider a court administrator now, and then when we make the transition and get over into the new facility, maybe the inclusion of a secretary for that individual as well.
Correct, but that would be in the '04 budget, when you presented your '04 budget.
Yeah.
Just a brief comment on the court administrator issue. In my discussions with people at the legislature and at the Supreme Court, they're very anxious to help us here in Lorain County, and they will do that, particularly the Supreme Court will do that, at no cost to the county, to help us bridge this gap. But they're concerned about a court administrator. And they placed a couple of conditions upon their willingness to help, and one is that space requirement, to have an ongoing administrative, or ongoing visiting judge on staff here. Secretary will support a bailiff, and Judge Zaleski and I have discussed those issues, and those are resolvable. But they're concerned about a court administrator also. They want a court administrator in place, and if you recall, that was one of their recommendations when they came in and did their review of our court system here.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot that was the closing, which is, in order, if we do this, we get a, I don't want to say a free judge, but the state is going to pick up the cost of having a sixth judge for Lorain County till '06.
To help bridge the gap.
Yeah, to help bridge the gap.
For how long?
From now until '06, or whenever they, whenever they get a visiting judge here. And, you know, we can talk about the cost in itself, but, you know, if we want to use low lump numbers, that 300 a year, that's one, you know, that's 1.2 million in four years. Or we can use my numbers, which is, you know, you know, seven...
Well, we know we're all challenged for space here in the county, but there's a lot of team players here that are willing to suck it up and help out where we can. I know, I know there's, there's going to be space made available if we can get somebody in here at no cost to the county.
But do you see that as the issue at hand right now, is what I tried to, I forgot about the free, or the services that the state's going to provide for the county, if this is the steps we take?
Correct.
That's how I see it. And that's what I, that's why I support it, because we're getting something from the state to help alleviate the dockets.
What do we have to do to get something, I don't mean to be facetious and ask about it in writing, but the state's financial condition is much better than ours. In fact, I think we're in a little better shape because we manage our money better here in Lorain County. But how do we effectuate this? I mean, we take action, we do all these things, and then they say, "Oh, well, we can't do it anymore." I mean, how do we do business like that, Judge?
It's my understanding, they're on board, and a resolution passed by the commissioner supporting a judge to be elected in this year, and along with the resolution letting us hiring a court administrator, we send that down to Columbus. Somebody will sponsor legislation, the Supreme Court, if they see everybody's on board, the local papers, the Bar Association, county prosecutor, the commissioners, the judges, then we're good to go.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County...
New business?
I have none. Number one, the ballot casting will be held at the fairgrounds, Wellington, Ohio, on August 19th and 20th. Two, administration briefing will be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2003, at 9:30 for the discussion on the Oracle system. Three, Board of Commissioners will meet on Thursday, September 25, 2003, at 7:00 PM at Foreman Middle School, 201 South Main Street, Wellington, Ohio. Therefore, no meeting will be held that day. And four, reports given by Ron Twining, Director of Lorain County Community Development Department, one, Lorain County Port Authority, and two, 2002 Annual Report on the Community Development Department.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, T-W-I-N-I-N-G, and I'm here first as the Director of the Port Authority. And for the public's information, it's important that we at least acknowledge that the Port Authority, while created by the Board of Commissioners, it is separate, and we're trying to desperately separate our identity through the Port Authority from the county commissioners. It has a board of five members that directs the operation of the County Port Authority, and out of the courtesy of the Board of County Commissioners to that Port Authority board, you have authorized two staff members of the Community Development Department to work directly on the efforts while we're establishing the Port Authority. Those two individuals are myself and Karen Johnston. Today, I am pleased to give you a verbal report on the efforts of the Port Authority since it's been started. It was really put together in the year 2001. The Port Authority has a bond reserve fund with National City Bank in Cleveland that has $2.5 million in that bond reserve fund, a million and a half coming from the Port of County Commissioners, and 1 million that was a match from the Department of Development. And that bond reserve fund guarantees payments on any bond projects that the Port Authority puts out. I think at this juncture, it might be interesting, if not important, to note that there were basically three counties that established, or communities that established port authorities about the same time, the first one being Summit County, that really got theirs established in the year 2000 and finalized the necessary setup in 2001. Dayton, Montgomery County, Dayton, Ohio, started theirs in 2001 and finished the establishment in 2002. And frankly, we started ours in 2001 and wrapped things up in 2002. Of those three entities, we were the last to enter the Port Authority arena, and we were the first, and so far, the only port authority that has completed any projects. We have completed two to date. The first transaction being 1.245 million, yeah, $1.245 million, and that was the new Visitors Bureau facility that is being built on State Route 58 in Amherst Township. The other one was a certificate of participation...